The May 19th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Legions.
My Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have the opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address us on city business, which is not on the agenda for that meeting. Our meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, but for exact dates, you could look at our website. The open podium period of time is from approximately 6:30 to 7:55, and if you wish to talk to us at that time, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the issue you would like to discuss. After scheduled speakers are concluded, we will open up the floor to anybody who wants to spontaneously address us, but if you want to be sure to address us at that time, please make an appointment. These portions of the meeting are not recorded nor are they televised, and again, if you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412. We have a number of things on the agenda tonight, all related to human rights awards, and Patricia, are you going to start us off there? Okay.
So, every year, the Human Rights and Diversity Commission presents a Human Rights Awards in different categories that are connected to our Eden Prairie Manifesto, and the Eden Prairie Manifesto intends to continue the development of a multicultural community which will not tolerate acts of harassment and intolerance, and establishes, communicates, and encourages community standards that respect diversity and promote acceptance and respect for individuals in an atmosphere of caring for others. So, at this time, I'd like to invite the Human Rights Commissioners to come to the front and present the awards.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Falardo. I'm the Chair of the Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission. I have the honor to give the Human Rights Award for individual to Marcela Ruiz. Marcela Ruiz is a teacher at Eagle Heights Spanish immersion. She taught my daughter how to read, and she upholds the values of our manifesto through her work to honor, acknowledge, and celebrate different cultures and values in our community. She's hosted many cultural events to showcase the Latino community to the rest of Eden Prairie, and I'm honored to present this award to her.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandra, and congratulations, my sala. Appreciate the work you do. The next is a student award.
Hi, my name is Karina Lynn. I am a student commissioner on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and the first youth award is to Rochelle Johnson because of her efforts to help individuals with learning differences achieve their full potential through volunteering with various organizations and the creation of Unique Learners Rising Above High School Club. So, congratulations, and I am really honored to present this to you. You're really inspiring. And the second youth award is to Kifa Mohammed because of her efforts to build friendship and understanding between Muslim and non-Muslim students, and her commitment to being a role model for other first-generation immigrant youth to pursue education and give back to their community. So, this is for you, and I would give the award to that too.
Thank you, Karina, and congratulations to both Kifa and Rochelle. I think this is the first year that we've had a student on the board present the awards. That's really nice. Thank you for your service. Then, we have an award for nonprofits.
Good evening. My name is Connie Icavali. I am presenting the nonprofit award. I'm a commissioner on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission to Choice. Choice exemplifies the Eden Prairie Manifesto through its work supporting adults with intellectual disabilities reach their full potential as citizens in our community through employment, social activities, and the pursuit of lifelong learning. Thank you, Michael, for accepting this.
Congratulations to Choice, another great nonprofit serving our residents. Thank you, Connie. Finally, a business award.
I feel so short. I'm sorry. I'm Sanaa Lazar from the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and presenting this award to a business is going to be, I'll be presenting it to Punch Neapolitan Pizza. They do not have a representative here today, so Patricia will be accepting it, but before she comes and accepts it, I'm going to read the commitment. Punch Pizza shows a commitment to the values of our Eden Prairie Manifesto through their business's commitment to afford workers a fair wage above the minimum federal required and for the company's ongoing efforts to give back to the community.
So, accepting on behalf of Punch, Patricia. Every year, our Human Rights and Diversity Commission makes these awards to individuals and organizations in our community, and it's always wonderful to hear about the good work being done by individuals at all different levels. So, thank you for presenting those awards today. We have some donations to accept. Mr. Lathammer, do you want to start with that?
Yes, Your Honor, council members, tonight we have a couple donations. The first one for $500 from Home Team Remodelers, and this is to go towards the Arts in the Park event, which just happened this past weekend and was very successful, always dependent on the weather, which was good enough, a little bit of rain in the morning, but we had a steady group of people coming through and really had an outstanding group of artists, local artists, that were offering and displaying what they do in the community. So, it was a good event, and we appreciate the Home Team Remodelers, and so we have a resolution for your consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Home Team Remodelers, Inc. to go towards the Arts in the Park event.
Kathy, you'll have to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And another donation?
Yes, this is another $500 donation from Holtken, Hoxy, and Wakey Orthodontics, and it's for the Spooky Saturday event, so a few months away, but we'll promote that as it gets closer, but we appreciate their contribution to help fund the event as well.
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Holtken, Hoxy, and Wakey Orthodontics to go towards the Spooky Saturday event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And another donation?
Yes, this is another $500 donation from Holtken, Hoxy, and Wakey Orthodontics, and it's for the Spooky Saturday event, so a few months away, but we'll promote that as it gets closer, but we appreciate their contribution to help fund the event as well.
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Holtken, Hoxy, and Wakey Orthodontics to go towards the Spooky Saturday event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. The next item is the 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Getchell, do you want to introduce that?
Certainly, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have with us our auditors to go over the 2014 Annual Financial Report and the report of the audit in the city of Eden Prairie.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I am Doug Holst. I'm a principal from Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen, and with me is Chris Knopig, also a principal with Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen, and we're here to present our audit, the audit results, and tonight, we're going to spend it at a pretty high level. We're going to hit the key points, but it's the first year that we have audited the city of Eden Prairie, and over the 23 years that I've done audits, there's various levels of preparedness from the cities that we audit with the first year that we come in. And before we get into some of the details, I'd just like to say and let everybody know that in all those years, I like to rate the audits on a scale from 1 to 10, and I'm a tough grader, but I would say this one was probably a 10.5. The staff were so prepared for the audit when we came in, we actually ended up being done with our fieldwork one day earlier than we had planned because the staff had sent us information in advance, and were so helpful when we were here. So, thanks to everyone for all their cooperation. So, with that, I believe you should have some handout, or, there we go. This just lists your audit team, and basically, we, the people assigned to your audit team, do government audits all year long, so a very knowledgeable audit team. Also, high-level summary of the audit results. We issued a clean opinion on your financial statements, but, which means your financial statements are materially correct as presented, and also, audit standards require us to communicate certain things to you, those charged with governance, and we do that via a three- or four-page letter that each member of governance has received. So, you can read that at your leisure. We were required to do a single audit as well, which means you had over 500,000 of federal expenditures, and we did not have any findings in internal control or compliance with the testing that we did there. Also, we're required to test and evaluate your internal controls, and when there are what's called findings, we need to communicate those to you. Well, based on all our testing, we do not have any of those what's called material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and one key item to note here is, I've been auditing governments for 23 years, and this is now only the fourth audit I've ever done that has not had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so that's a, things like that don't happen by accident either. It's due to a strong commitment from, I believe, governance and all of management and the staff from top-down. It's just a strong commitment allows that to exist. Also, as part of the audit, there was one item, we're required to test for legal compliance items, and there was just one form that we weren't presented with when we did the audit. So, that being the case, those are the key sort of general-type issues, and with that, I'll turn it over to Chris to go over some financial items.
Thank you very much, Doug. Yeah, I'm just going to go over some brief financial highlights here for the city. This first one, we're going to look at the general fund, and in general, the big key point here is, for the revenues, they were over budget by 2.2 million, which is 5.4%. The biggest driver of that was taxes, and the tax collections, but then also building permits for the city with the development that's happened over the past year. Those categories being over budget more than offset the expenditures just being slightly over budget. They were at 100.5%. And then, really, the ultimate result of that is, the city was able to add about $800,000 to the general fund fund balance, which is just helping to contribute towards that stable fund balance, and then also meeting the city's policy for fund balance. And then, when we look at the enterprise funds for the city here, the big highlights here is, in the water fund, your revenues decreased just shy of 5.5%, or just over $400,000. The largest piece here is the conservation, and then also the wet summer over the last year really contributed to the decrease, if you want to say, the usage, so the number of gallons that were actually billed out to customers, and that more than outpaced the slight increase that the city had. But a positive note here, you're still adding to some of your cash reserves, which is helping you make your goal or reach towards your goal of a $9.5 million cash reserve in the water fund. Also, when we look at the sewer fund here, your revenues actually increased here slightly, mainly driven off of the rate increase, outpacing the decrease, if you want to say, the usage. So, the number of gallons that were actually billed out to customers, and that more than outpaced the slight increase that the city had. But a positive note here, you're still adding to some of your cash reserves, which is helping you make your goal or reach towards your goal of a $9.5 million cash reserve in the water fund. Also, when we look at the sewer fund here, your revenues actually increased here slightly, mainly driven off of the rate increase, outpacing the decrease, if you want to say, the usage there, but then also here, another key factor is the goal of having a $3.4 million cash reserve. You're just barely under that, so you're making good strides towards making that goal. For the storm drainage fund, revenues increased here mainly off of the rate increase that the city has been implementing in there. There was a couple of things that, just to note there, there is negative cash at the end of the year of about $880,000, but the biggest driver of that is, over the last year, there were some significant unexpected capital improvements that had to happen in that fund, but with the 10-year plan that the city has in place, there is an expectation that there will be some positive cash flows coming out of that fund in the next couple of years, so just a key thing there. Within the liquor operations for the city, sales decreased this year just under 2%, or about $215,000, but even with the sales decrease this year, the city was still able to transfer over $1 million out of the liquor fund into the capital improvement and maintenance fund, and then still have positive net income after the fact, so that's very commendable for the operations of the liquor fund. It's providing some very nice cash flow there. And then, also, the girls' profit percentage this year did take a slight decrease this year, but you're still at 26.2%, which is still on pace and actually slightly above the other averages that we're seeing, both statewide and in the metro area. So, as far as the estimated market values here, just a real key thing to know here is that the market values are starting to continue to trend upwards again, showing that recovery that's out there, and with the 2015 market values that are out there, the city should be back above $9 billion as far as the market value goes, which is continued improvement. When we look at the tax capacities and the rates here, really, the big thing here, inverse relationship between the tax capacity and the actual tax capacity rates, and also, we are reflecting the net levy in here, which is in the general levy and the debt service levy here, and your tax capacity is continuing to increase while also maintaining that tax capacity rate and actually slightly decreasing it for 2015. When we look at the tax rates for the city compared to the seven-county metro, but then also the statewide average, the key thing here is, the city continues to maintain an average that is significantly lower than the rest of the metro, and the important thing here is just to remember that, really, the only number on this slide that you can control is the city's rate. Everything outside of that is beyond the city's control, so you're at the mercy of the county, the school districts, any of the special taxing districts, so really, to be able to maintain the city tax rate at a lower level is really a positive thing for the residents. Revenues per capita, when we break this down, really, the key things here are, if you look at the intergovernmental revenue line and the property tax line, it's really reflecting that the city doesn't rely on some of those state credits and state aids that other municipalities have. The fluctuation that you see in that line is really when the city is getting additional, whether it's transportation grants, or municipal construction, or economic development grants, that's driving that line, but then also inversely, you're seeing a higher property tax per capita, but that just reflects that same lack of dependence on state aids. When we look at the expenditures per capita, really, the key thing here to note is that the city has a significantly lower per capita rate in the debt service category compared to other cities, the city's size, but really, that's allowing the city to be able to spend that money on other programs, whether it's police, fire, parks, and recreation. It's really letting the city use their dollars to more benefit the citizens as opposed to having to pay the principal and interest that are going on. And then, just some other real key brief highlights here, the financial statements, there's the state reporting form, which will be submitted on time. The city will continue to submit the city's comprehensive annual financial report to the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. The city has received that award every year since 1990, so it's going on 23, this will be the 24th year the city's applied for that. Another really important piece there is the city's AAA bond rating. It's very rare that cities get that. Out of the 225 municipalities analyzed in the state of Minnesota here over the last year or so, only 15 have achieved that rating, so it's a very positive thing for the city. And then, as I mentioned, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting on that last one. And then, just a couple of real quick standards that are going to be coming for the city here over the next two years. That first one, standard 68, it's going to require the city to book their fair share of unfunded liabilities for the statewide pension plans that the city is a part of, and then also, with the next one on there, is really just more of a financial disclosure, no real significant impact on the city, it's just more of a note disclosure item with the fair value standards that's going to be coming out. And then, really, that slide shows somebody kind of jumping for joy, and that's really the transition from your prior auditor to us, really, is what Doug goes back to, just the overall being, with the city being prepared, the top-down, the emphasis that's put on sound financial reporting and being ready when you say you're going to be ready, it's, you can't measure that when you come to us from the audit side, that just can't be measured. So, I, we want to commend the staff, city council, everybody, on a very smooth and great audit from our side as well.
Thank you very much for that sort of executive summary of what we heard earlier at our workshop tonight. I want to thank Sue and her staff for the great job they've been doing, keeping things well organized and making sure that our procedures are all well segregated, and I also want to thank staff for working so closely with the city council to make sure that we have budgets and strong financial policies that lead us to be in such an excellent financial position as we find out we are continually, so thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the auditors? We had an opportunity to ask questions earlier, so I think we're fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept?
I'd move to accept the 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to add or delete? Okay. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting, pardon me, the city council workshop held on Tuesday, May 5?
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to correct in those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion for approval of the minutes for the city council meeting held that same date?
So moved.
Second.
Or any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. We have a consent calendar. Are there any items to pull for discussion or any questions on anything? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve items A through O on the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. This brings us to our first of two public hearings, the Eden Prairie Plaza. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first public hearing is a request for a planned unit development district review, zoning district review, and site plan review on 3.03 acres, which is Salon Concepts at the Eden Prairie Plaza. It's a proposed project to convert the vacant Frank's Nursery business that's been vacant in that plaza building since 2007 into a 58-space parking lot, and this property is zoned regional commercial, regional service commercial within the major center area and town center area, and this area itself is assumed and predicted to be redeveloped in the future, but this is considered a recommended, proposed interim use for this property in the meantime. The applicant, as part of the project, is proposing to remove the western wall of the outdoor display area, and I think you can see in the packet, there are quite a bit of improvements that I think the applicant's going to discuss that they're also going to make to the area as well as the parking lot. There are, with this action tonight, following the public hearing, a few waivers that are requested to allow almost an 80% impervious surface area and a waiver to the requirements of the planting islands within the parking areas, but as I mentioned before, instead of the parking islands, there will be some added aesthetics that would be included. The planning commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the project at their April 27th meeting, and as I said before conducting the public hearing, the applicant is here to provide some additional detail, and then the applicant and city staff could answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you all for your time. My name is Brent Van Leeu. I'm with Salon Concepts and Sepri LLC. It's Salon Concepts Eden Prairie Real Estate. Salon Concepts opened in the center of Eden Prairie Plaza in, excuse me, March of 2014. We were just a tenant at that point in time. We invested about $800,000 into the improvements in the building for our salon and have signed a long-term lease of approximately 20 years effectively with options. Point to that is, we plan on being in Eden Prairie for a long time, and our opening has been better than we expected, and, which has kind of led us to why I'm standing here this evening. Through a couple of different events, we ended up purchasing the building from Kimco, which was a large real estate investment trust, frankly, wasn't paying much attention to the building, and it was creating a number of issues for us as tenants. So, we purchased that in December of 2014, and at that point in time, we approached the city here with Julie Klema and Tanya Matani, and over the last several months, they've been extremely helpful. I come from a real estate background from Cincinnati, Ohio, and it has been a pleasure working with them. They're more than prepared, so we've worked with them for a number of months and put together, I believe you all have a copy of this. I'd just like to go through a few highlights if I could.
Could we throw it up on the screen for people and TV audience?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Let's see if somebody can help. Lorraine, could you put his stuff on the screen, maybe? Oh, Janet does it.
Unfold your pocket. Which one is probably best?
There's quite a few attachments. Is there any specific one?
Probably the most general, whatever's going to show people the most if they were looking at it.
Yeah, that looks good.
Oh, okay, perfect.
When they hear, "You can all see this," and they say, "But we can't."
I understand. Okay, I guess the first thing I'd like to explain is, Eden Prairie Plaza, if you weren't aware, it's actually two parcels that are kind of connected. So, we have the Dollar Tree, which is to the south, Salon Concepts, and then the vacant outdoor display area, which is actually contiguous with Champs and Petco, actually, Petco, excuse me, then Champs. So, the area that we own is from Petco South. Our building is 8,388 square feet, and we currently have 105 parking spaces. The contiguous property to the north, Champs and Petco, has about, little north of 24,000 square feet with an additional outdoor patio area for the Champs Sports Bar, excuse me, and they currently have 149 parking spaces. There is a reciprocal easement that allows for cross-parking between the two. It's been in place for a number of years. What has occurred since we opened, we are a suite rental salon, so the way that works is, we go in and we subdivide our space down into individual salon suites, so each individual beauty operator effectively owns their own business, so they come and go at their set hours, they set their own times. The point to that is, we have 36 individual suites in there, so at any given time, we could have up to 36 stylists in there and potentially 36 clients in there. We normally project about 18 to 24 months to get to approximately 90% occupancy, and we actually have reached, we're at about 26 chairs out of 36 chairs total, and that's sort of plateaued because of the parking issues we've had, but the point to that is, it's been very well received. The stylists like it, the clients very much like it as well, but that, along with the popularity of Champs, and they have special events and things like that, has created problems, severe parking problems that occur, have occurred every week since we've been open effectively, and there's really no overflow. We can't park on the street or any surrounding lots or things like that, so we are looking to this, what seems like a very obvious area to reutilize effectively. You went through, and you had mentioned that we're currently regional commercial zoning guided for town center, and I think ultimately transit-oriented development, so we do realize that this zoning is in flux, and we're just trying to utilize an existing structure in a more beneficial way. As it relates to the comprehensive guide plan, we're trying to reuse the existing pavement that's there. It's concrete pavement, it's very thick, we've had it tested, and I think that goes along with the city guide plan to promote sustainability and conservation. We're also using some permeable pavers in some of the old planting beds. We had soil borings drilled, and there's only one area that currently drains properly, so we're going to use permeable pavers in that area. In addition to that, we're proposing adding some pedestrian benches, bicycle racks, decorative planters on the parking structure itself, and in addition to that, along Eden Road, which you see on the screen there, some additional decorative planting beds along the landscape area along Eden Road, which is the rear of the property. Again, to bring, you know, year-round interest and color to enhance the pedestrian environment, I realize there's going to potentially be a lot of people, you know, frequenting this area if the, when the rail comes through. On the actual lot itself, if you On the actual lot itself, if you could go back to the, that very first one, the signage plan, please. There you go. Thank you. One of the things we had a lot of discussion about with Tanya and Julie was, you know, this is the rear access, excuse me, the, the access to this would be along the rear access drive. It would be for Salon Concepts stylist, or they're not my employees, but stylists, and other employees of the center. It's not, it's not intended for pedestrian use or client use. And the reason for that is, the stylists all know the traffic patterns and delivery patterns. We've checked delivery schedules, delivery traffic patterns, and times when they come and go for safety purposes. So, one of the things that Tanya and Julie had recommended was making this one-way access so that you would enter from the south, yes, right there, circle around and exit to the left, back to the south. There's considerable amount of signage, I'm not sure if you can quite read that on there, that is directional and tries to, if there's snow on the ground and you can't see the direction, we've got signage on the walls without being too cluttered along that area. Additionally, we've, we've added some lighting, some accent lighting right there along the northern portion of this lawn area and the southern portion of, well, okay, the southern portion of Champs, and then also, yes, thank you, the southern portion of Dollar Tree. And that's, that's really just decorative lighting to, to go along again with the town center guidelines. The other thing along the front, and I think there's a photo, if you keep going just a little bit further, that shows the front facade. Says parking lot front facade. One more. There you go. Thank you. So, this is the front portion of the building. Salon Concepts and Dollar Tree directly to the left, Champs to the right. What we're proposing to do is simply remove, the columns would stay, the overhead area would stay with the decorative recessed lighting, and the wrought iron would be removed so that you would have pedestrian-friendly access through there, but not car access. So, the front of the building would remain as is in terms of aesthetic, aesthetics. The one other thing, we did, we did work with the fire department, and what this would do, and the access would be from the rear, is allows for easier emergency vehicle access to the site, where they wouldn't have been able to get a vehicle in there should there have been a fire, either a Champs or the side of Salon Concepts there. So, it does, does help with that as well. And then finally, one of the last things, it's shown on the survey, but I'm not sure that's going to show up very well. Along, running north and south along Eden Road to the rear, we've worked with Julie and proposed to add, there's an existing five-foot sidewalk easement. We've, we've proposed to extend that and change the language of that to 18 feet, to provide for sidewalk landscaping bench, benches, pedestrian gathering, excuse me, and utility easements as part of our proposal here this evening.
But the berm isn't going to go down?
No, the berm would stay exactly the same.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the proponent? Mr. Van Lou, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. It looks like good reuse of that portion of land that's just sitting there.
I hope so, yes.
Yeah, and it sounds like it's a definite need, and the landscaping materials look really good, and the benches, I love to see the bike racks. That's great, too.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Salon Concepts plans? Okay?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district review.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry to interrupt you. There is one thing that the city attorney needs to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
I'm very sorry.
You can, you can get through the motion.
Okay.
Okay. And zoning district review within the regional service commercial zoning district on 3.03 acres, and direct staff to prepare development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Getchell, or Mr. Rosso.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. After reviewing the council packet, I had discussions with Ms. Kleema and Ms. Jeremiah earlier in the day, and brought the city manager into those discussions as well. And it struck me that from reviewing the packet and from the presentation tonight, that there is this general consensus that this is an interim use of the property, but you're authorizing a use that has no interim sunset to it. Most interim use ordinances in cities that have those have a sunset provision in the interim use. And because there seems to be some general consensus about that, and because the property is not being developed in conformance with your guide plan, and that waivers are required to allow this to go forward, it appeared to me, consistent with all that, that it'd be appropriate for the council to include as a condition for the development agreement that there be negotiated a sunset provision that is subject to renewal by the council should market conditions not prove that the market is ready for the redevelopment of the site, and that that would be added as a condition in the, in the development agreement.
So, that would be, we don't need to amend the motion because the motion included council conditions, so we can put that in as a council.
As long as the council voices that that's one of the conditions you'd like to see.
So, I just have a question regarding that. In terms of, is there, is there a time on that, or is, are you saying that it's tied to market conditions and, and the future potential development of the site?
What I'm suggesting is that that be, the time be developed by staff in discussions with the developer, and that whatever time that they believe is appropriate arising out of that discussion be included in the development agreement, and that it's that time that is then subject to extension based upon market conditions.
Okay. That, that's more clear. Thank you.
Mr. Getchell?
I was going to add then, then at second reading, if that is at the June 16th meeting, then you would see that in the packet, and you would know that, the result of that discussion.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next public hearing is a first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 1155 relating to land alteration, tree preservation, and stormwater management. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are bringing forward tonight a first reading of ordinance amendments relating to those areas of the City Code that the mayor mentioned, land alteration, tree preservation, and stormwater management. The main reason is for the city to meet the new requirements that are part of Minnesota Pollution Control Agency rules and regulations related to the permit that we have from the state of Minnesota and through the federal government. Our city environmental coordinator, Leslie Stovering, is here to provide an overview of those changes and to answer any questions that you may have.
Hello. Good evening. And yes, I'm going to give just a real quick update on why we are doing this. And basically, in 2013, there was a new permit issued for our stormwater management program by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. December of 2013, we submitted what is called a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program document to the MPCA, which was approved on April 3rd, 2014. And what that did is it extended coverage so that we are able to discharge stormwater in the city, which is a good thing. And, because if we couldn't do that, we can't develop. So, and our application was approved, and we have a number of new measures and programs and plans that were required in that update, one of which was our stormwater rule requirements. And this is totally separate from any other rules that are coming about nowadays. This is not related to any of the watershed district rule requirements or anything. This is strictly what's required in our stormwater permit. And what they're mainly going for is trying to update our post-construction stormwater program. The MPCA has been very concerned that we have been building things and then not maintaining and managing them. And so, they have been slowly trying to ratchet up what we're required to do to manage our program going forward. One key thing is that this program, our rules are focused on projects that are one acre or larger. However, the exception is, which is a difficult one, is that they're trying to close what they think of as a loophole. They think that developers are buying multiple properties that are adjoining, smaller than one acre, and trying to get away with not getting a permit, but then they turn around and they sell it as one common project, or market it as one common project. And what they've done is they've required the city to say, "Well, if you turn around and do that, you're supposed to get a stormwater permit, and you have to follow all these rules." The question is going to come is, how in the world are we supposed to catch that and make sure that they get the required permit? So, that is one kind of caveat that they have in this one acre or larger. And then also, we had to add in provisions that all developers had to meet or exceed the state's construction stormwater permit requirements. And part of that is because they are pretty short-staffed, and they want to make sure that the city has the ability to monitor and issue notifications if they're falling behind in their permit requirements. So, what has changed in our rules? Well, basically, the last time we were, did a rule update was in 2006. So, a large part of what we did is, the reason we're doing a replacement is because we basically reorganized the whole section. The city attorney is like, "Well, let's separate the processes and the procedures," and so that took a lot of moving around. We consolidated the tree replacement requirements. That is so that in the future, if we decide to put those into their own section, we can do that relatively easily. And then, of course, just terminology changes, changes in how we do things. Definitions have changed. And then one thing we added, which was, we noticed recently is, has become a little bit of a problem, is this expiration date. There's no expiration date for permits in our code right now. And we have had a couple instances where they come in and they're like, "Well, we were issued a permit 10 years ago, and we want to just pick up and start over." And we're like, "Well, the rules have changed at the state and the local level." And so, to try and manage those types of situations, we put an expiration date in there. What's new, of course, is the subdivision six. And this is this one acre or larger, this is the new stormwater post-construction management. One thing is, green infrastructure analysis is now required. Developer has to look at green infrastructure techniques for use, for infiltration and stormwater management. And now, there are new requirements for nutrients and volume, which of course is infiltration. They require that for all new development, that there be no net increase in nutrients and volume, and that's phosphorus and total suspended solids, and that for redevelopment, that there be a net decrease. The good thing is, and I was on the committee that worked with the MPCA to get these, the permit conditions rewritten, and one thing we really pushed for, and they did accept, is they did not put any numerical guidelines on this increase or decrease, which is really good for us because a net decrease could mean teeny tiny. So, and then the volume or infiltration management, there are a number of areas where obviously we don't want infiltration. It could be, it's an active gas station. There could be an industrial permit there that we wouldn't want infiltration. So, there, they do allow us to put in some prohibitions. And then the restrictions would be areas where maybe historically there was a gas station, or there was a Phase 2 done for the project, an environmental assessment, and they found some problems, or it could be close to a wellhead protection area, or something like that. And that would require additional analysis to determine if we should not be allowing infiltration in those areas. And then, of course, there are exceptions, and these would include road corridors, trail corridors, where there's not a lot of room for infiltration. We do have to make, you know, good faith effort to get right of way, but it does allow us to provide exceptions for those types of activities, which is good. And also, the last thing is mitigation. And one of them is, is for nutrients, they have to provide mitigation. That is a no azits or but. If they can't do it on-site, they have to provide mitigation. The good thing is, we have been very proactive with our stormwater system evaluations. So, we do have a number of areas where we could do and provide suggestions for mitigation activities. So, we do have a number of areas where that would come in handy. For volume, if they can't meet it on-site, we do have it set up where they can do a cash-in lieu of, or they can look at some of these green infrastructure techniques to try and do additional treatment. And basically, that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions? Councilmember Nelson?
I've got two questions. On the stormwater part, will this affect any individual homes? There's still a few lots that are an acre or over around town. Will this affect how they have to operate at all these changes, from what, in many cases, these have been owned by people for a long time?
Well, this is for sites that are one acre or larger. So, if they're increasing impervious cover by an acre, yes, it would change how they would have to.
But if they're not changing anything in their house, they're just living in it the way they always have, with the same house, same driveway, will it change things?
Oh, no. I thought you meant if they, like, tear it down and redevelop the site.
No. Well, yeah, redevelopment, that's the whole thing. But a person who's just happily sitting on their large lot, having maybe a large garden or something, does this change anything for them?
No, there are exceptions for single-family residential.
The other thing is, does the tree thing do anything as far as what someone can take down a tree on a property, especially if they live near a lake or something? Can they still take it down, or is it the same as it's always been, or?
It is the same as it's always been. It's basically 10%, less than 10%. You don't need a permit. More than 10% you do.
So, is the, oh, is that a total? So, if you have four trees and you want to take one down, that's a problem?
We did put 10% or one tree. We did add in one tree. So, if you have one tree on your lot.
Well, but if, you know, there's sometimes is a tree that's, say, a big ash tree that you want to proactively take down and plant something else. They can still do that?
It means that you would need to get a permit. It doesn't mean you can't do it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Aho?
Just in terms of development costs, I mean, do you have any, any kind of feel for, if someone is developing a property, do you have, I mean, do you think that this is, these changes are going to impact the development costs at all, and if so, by, would you say, is it 10% more, is it 15? You know, what, what would your, just gut feel estimate be?
Well, I, my gut feeling is that it does have the potential to increase costs because of the mitigation requirements. Right now, they would need to do a good faith attempt to do it, and if they can't, they basically can't. But unfortunately, under the new permit requirements, they would be required to do this extra mitigation. Unfortunately, we have no choice. So, we, so yes, it does have the ability to add cost to a project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stovering. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this? Okay. Hearing none. Any motion, please?
I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 11.55 relating to land alteration, tree preservation, and stormwater management.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye. One of the last things, then, is we, I want to mention the passing of a long, long, lifelong Eden Prairie resident, Maria Wittenberger, passed away last week.
Prairie resident, Marie Wittenberger, passed away last week. She was born in Eden Prairie, spent all her life here. Her father, Rudy Berger, had come over from Germany when he was 12, and she grew up near Riley Lake. And I've been, she's been a very active community leader for a number of years, and I've been provided with sheets of information about Marie, enough for a book, which is kind of interesting because she wrote the book on Eden Prairie. She wrote many a book about Eden Prairie. She wrote a book called Eden Prairie Pioneers, The History of Eden Prairie, which was published in 1979, about the same time that Helen Holden Anderson's book, The First Hundred Years of Eden Prairie, was published. And Marie's book differentiated from Helen's in that it had a lot more pictures and photographs of early Eden Prairie days. She also wrote a book called Eden Prairie Cemeteries and Chen Hassan Catholic Cemetery, in which she incidentally noted that St. Hubert's Catholic Church Cemetery in Chen Hassan had about a third of the individuals that were buried there had previously resided in Eden Prairie. She wrote a book called Images of America, Eden Prairie, which was published in 2003. Another book, Eden Prairie, A Brief History, published in 2010. She was very active in honoring the contributions of both current Eden Prairie residents and Eden Prairie residents of the past. She served as the director of the Eden Prairie Museum in 2006. And in 2006, she also served on the original Eden Prairie Veterans Memorial Committee, which successfully championed and organized the development of the memorial in Purgatory Park, where we have Veterans Day and Memorial Day observances every year. Those of us that knew Marie know that she was full of energy and she was full of smiles, always pleasant to see, and had something interesting to say, and she really will be missed, a great community member. So we're sad to hear of her going.
Any other business to bring forth before the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.